At this time, we'll call the Marshall, meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. I want to make a few comments about the agenda that we have this evening. First off, the, because it's precinct caucus night by state statute, we need to be adjourned on or before 6:00 PM. So we'll, that's the reason for us starting at 4:00, and we need to be adjourned by 6:00 PM whether or not we're completed with our agenda or not. Secondly, the public hearing has been previously publicized that that will be held at 5:30. So we will wait until 5:30, but then regardless of where we're at on the agenda, we will shift back to the public hearing, and that's the public hearing on South Forest Street. So if you're here for that meeting, know that we're, for that public hearing, know that we're not going to be at that point until 5:30. And then third, let me say for, only for tonight, but for meeting management purposes and for kind of watching the clock, when we get to the consent agenda, as if there's items that any member of the council wants removed from the consent agenda, to discuss that separately, that's of course, fine, but we will have those discussion items then at the end of the new business items. It's only three items, new business, so, so say if you want, you know, any of the agenda items, we would then just shift that down. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the, we will be adjourned at 6:00 PM. Hopefully, we will be through the meeting by that time, but if not, any item remaining will have to be carried over until the next meeting, and that includes the public hearing if we're not completed with the public hearing at 6:00 PM. So with that, is there any other input or additions or deletions to this agenda? Not while operating under that agenda, we'll move then to agenda item number two. This would be to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on February 11th, 2020. Council does have the minutes, are there any corrections?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. So we will now move to agenda item number four. Again, we'll leave agenda item number three, the public hearing, until 5:30. So agenda item number four is the authorization to purchase a new commercial mower for the Parks Department. I'll call on, Jason, are you going to start this, and then Preston Stentru from the Parks Department will come forward.
Preston will handle this item.
Okay. So we do have the recommendation, the specs were reviewed by the Equipment Review Committee, and questions can be addressed to Preston Stentru from our Parks Department. Preston?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Like the Mayor said, the specs that go to the Equipment Review Committee and were approved, similar mower to what we're operating now, they have switched to a new series, but fits all of our attachments and such. With that, we got two bids from, one from Kibble here in town, and one from Lyon County Implement or C&amp;B Operations out of Tracy. The bids were very competitive, within like $151. I recommend the purchase from Kibble and Marshall, just to keep it in town for that $151 mower. And that would include the mower, cab, deck, and a new 47-inch snow blower for the front of it. That would fit our other mowers too, but our blower we have now is on its 11th season. So we have 29-3, I believe, in the budget, so we came under budget. So I'll kind of leave that part at that, and then I would like to have a real quick discussion on getting on a rotation to keep them under a two-year warranty, because our cost is, I think it's financially a good choice to do, but I'll take questions on this first, so.
Okay, thank you, Preston. Questions? If not yet, Steve?
So Preston, when we look at, I always ask this question, but the state, that state service, do we look at that buying service and what the bids are with that?
Actually, if we did this, like the state contract, is that what you mean? The state contract would be about $7,000 higher than this.
Really?
Yep. For mowers, state contracts are not good at all.
And then, is there an advantage of buying versus leasing, especially if you're in that two-year rotation?
Yep. If we do that, it's kind of leading into the next thing, but leasing is a far lesser deal than buying. We just own it, and basically, we're owning it for two years, but yeah, leasing is not favorable, in my opinion.
Okay, and the one that we're replacing, can you tell me about, a little about that? I mean, what's the state of repair and?
It's a 2012, gets used year-round for snow and with the cab and stuff. It's got 3,500 hours on it, which is a lot. So, you know, $500 a year. The cab's rusting, the deck just gets wore out because it's running at full RPMs all the time. We just put newer end in it, because they're four-wheel drive. So it's just miscellaneous stuff, hydraulics, it's just going to start having downtime, and before we stick a lot of money into it, it's better just to kind of have it move on.
Thank you.
And Craig?
Yeah, and it's going to be hard for us to not blend into the next subject, and we've talked about this on the Equipment Committee too, is that there's some options, and Preston has done a lot of work and met with the folks at Kibble, and also working with C&amp;B Operations out of Tracy on getting the bids and specing these out, excuse me, and also looking at the cost to operate, and it's becoming evident that it may be in our best interest to just buy them and trade them every year, just the powerhead part of it, and keeping the, like the attachments to blowers and that, but continue to cycle them out. And we'd stay in the warranty, and we actually, looking at the overall cost to own them out to the 3,500 hours, we could actually reduce our costs by continuing to replace them on a rotation and giving them back a pretty solid piece. It's similar to leasing, but we would still technically own the mower and be buying it out, but their pricing is so favorable that, that's something that, that with the Equipment Committee, we discussed that with Preston and asked him, he brought it up that he'd had the discussion, and it seemed to have enough merit that we asked him to dig further, and we'll be talking about that further down, but it looks like it's probably going to be a more solid deal, and then we have less downtime on the mowers too, simply because we're running, running them on the front end new, and any issues we have is warranty, so we should get replacement to keep them operating also as part of that warranty.
Other questions? Russ?
Preston, you and I had a conversation regarding the size of the blower, and I just, I would like you to bring that up to the full council, because you're actually going down a size, whip-wise, right? Is that correct?
Yep. We have two blowers, one's a 60-inch, and then one's this 47, or I just call it four-foot to be easy, but we have mainly the sidewalk we have left is along Lyon Street at Independence Park. That's our only existing sidewalk that's 48 inches in the park system, but we need this smaller blower for that, otherwise you cut all the sod and stuff off. So at some point, if we would replace all that sidewalk and go to five, or eight, or whatever, anything bigger than four, we could go to a, keep one size blower, but we'd probably still need two of them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Preston. Any other questions on the recommendation for the purchase?
I move we approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by John. Discussion? If not?
Maybe just for clarification, that's with Kibble?
With Kibble, I'm sorry, yes, yeah. Except the little bid from, or the bid from Kibble, and we'll move ahead with it, yes.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion passes, and Preston, I'll let you discuss.
Yep. So after we received, we received the bids, just seeing that we, knowing we had 29-3 in the budget, and this came in at 25-9, I did get a, two quotes again. The last mower we bought was a 2018, warranty will be expiring April 1. We can trade that in now, two years old, for $4,000 to Kibble and Marshall, and start all over and get down this process. So $2,000 per a year to operate at our current rates that we're doing now, based on what we're getting for trade and what we're paying for them, it's costing us $3,700 a year to keep our mowers and have them not be in warranty. So in my opinion, if we could get, we have four mowers that are like identical to these, and then we have two that are different, and then two for mowing ball fields. So I haven't quite got to that point with Toro yet on the striping mowers, but I'm comfortable with all the John Deere mowers, to where we'd get on a rotation. Since there's a two-year warranty, we'd do two this year, two next year, and then it'd just be $8,000 a year to trade out two mowers that would be two years old. Instead of now, I think we're budgeting $25,000 a year to replace one mower. So in the long run, it's going to take a little investment upfront to get on this rotation, but down the road, we'll be all in warranty, our equipment repairs will go down, offset this, downtime should be less, because we have less hours on equipment. So overall, I think it's a good situation, and I would like to do that and get on that rotation now before our warranty expires, and if I have to take the difference or shorten the budget, the $600 out of parks, maintenance, operations for now, I'd be willing and happy to do that, so.
Okay, and again, this was discussed by the Review Committee, Jim?
It was, it was a good discussion we had, and after, you know, I visited Preston today to running the numbers, just 3,500, that's just in the equipment, that's not the repairs. So, you know, you start adding repairs, these mowers are costing us, I would say north of $4,000 a year. And then fortunately, Bob Van Moore's here. I guess wastewater, you guys have been doing this for years with your mowers, and it cost you, you said $1,700 a year, and you just cycle this thing out, and there's no downtime. I think it's a tremendous savings to the taxpayers at the end of the, and we have good, you know, it's nice-looking equipment, but if we, Preston can budget just $2,000 a year per mower, there it is, it's done.
Right.
Where seven years, what did we figure, Preston? You said you've lost 24,000 or three, whatever, about 24,000 in value on this new mower?
Yep.
Which is 3,500, I mean, it's, and what's neat about this savings is if John Deere changes their program, we still own our mowers. So if they jack up their price, Preston can come back and say, well, it is not going to work this year. They raise their price, they're not doing the same government program. So like you said, Steve, it's similar to leasing, but we own them. So if John Deere says, no, we're going to now charge you 7,000 more for these mowers to state contract price, then we just keep them.
Yeah, we don't have to go buy them, we already have them.
We have them.
Yep.
Yep. We're basically just owning them for a year or two.
Right.
But we own them at the end of the day, and.
And Kibble gets the Marshall Signature Series, which makes them very attractive because they're well-kept, so they can sell them as almost new-used.
Right.
Yep.
And because of the government discount.
Right.
I mean, normally, this probably wouldn't work out, but we're getting a $48,000, $49,000 mower for 35 to start, and then using it two years, and they're hopefully selling it for almost that again.
Right. So we get to leverage the program.
Yep.
And I think you brought up, Preston, this is very common amongst, I think you said Tracy does this.
New Alm and Mankato does this to all their mowers and their whole fleet every year, so.
And like I said, our wastewater figured this out several years ago. I mean, how long have you guys been doing this, Bob?
Ten years, probably.
Ten years? And what's, how much savings do you believe you've made through that? I know I'm putting you on the spot here, but.
You know, that's a, probably an $18,000 mower we're running, and, you know, no, absolutely no upkeep to the thing by trading it annually, so we're probably saving a couple thousand dollars a year.
Okay, well, very good. I think you have the direction from the council.
Preston, thanks for putting all that effort.
Do we need to make a motion on that second mower, though?
No, that's up to you guys.
Well, the dollar amount, we don't do it.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Thank you very much, Preston and the committee, for doing that groundwork. I appreciate that, that really helps.
Thank you. It helped that we happened to have somebody in early for their meeting, so we got to tap their experience too, so it gave us value added, makes us look a little smarter than we are.
Yeah, we had tried this, I don't know, I suppose it was five years ago I looked into it, and it just wasn't favorable. I mean, it was almost like you're renting, but you're probably putting $6,000 in new year into each mower, so.
Perfect. It's a good deal, thanks, Preston.
Okay, thank you, Preston. We'll move then to the consent agenda. Bring the items up on the screen that are included on the consent agenda this evening, and they include, consider the approval of the amended 2020, 2021 employee wage schedules, consider the approval of the resolution authorizing the transfer and closure of the capital project fund 413, consider the approval of the resolution authorizing the transfer and the closure of capital project fund 462, calling for a public hearing regarding the proposed property tax abatement at 314 Rainbow Drive, the, consider the revision of the emergency operations plan for the city of Marshall, consider the approval of the 2020, 2021 township fire contracts, and consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purpose of a separate discussion?
Number five, please.
Any other item? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John to approve the items on the consent agenda with the exception of agenda item number five. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number 12, which is consider adopting the resolution supporting the construction of a four-lane Highway 23 north of Marshall to Green Valley. Because of my role with the Highway 23 Coalition coordinating their activities, I will abstain from, from this. You do have the supporting information, and, and this is one of the four priority projects for this year for the advocacy effort of the Highway 23 Coalition, and the Coalition has asked for the support for the neighboring communities.
Shouldn't we be working on the item we pulled from the consent agenda?
Well, we're going to have that after.
Oh, that's going to be the back, that's right, I'm sorry.
So with that, Sharon, do you have anything you wanted to add? Otherwise?
I just want to add that we did have a previous Highway 23 resolution at the previous meeting, and that related to type of surface material. This aligns a little bit more closely to our Marshall Area Transportation Group goals as well. It's not on type of surfacing, but on lane miles, and it is part of their emphasis and priority as well. So I just want to add that.
And the other difference between the previous resolution is that the previous resolution that was proposed by a different county also was suggesting delaying the improvement, so.
I move the, we adopt the resolution supporting the construction of the four-lane Highway 23 north of Marshall to Green Valley.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and that motion does pass. So agenda item number 13, the 2020, 2024 strategic plan adoption. Sharon?
Okay, I decided to present in front of you, so I don't have to look to the side, and I did mention in the council packet that I would spend about 20 minutes on this. In the essence of time, I'll try to speed it up a little bit. There's, I believe, about 38 slides. I'm not going to go through all of them intently, but I do want to cover some of the important aspects of the strategic plan. Let's see. Hopefully, you can read that, but just to kind of go back a little bit in history on the development of the strategic plan, this was a goal that I put forth to the city council when I first came to the city at the end of 2017, and in early 2019, or late 2018, actually, the city council did approve facilitator services, and we really began this in early, in early 2019. We started off with surveys of our city council and department division heads, and then, and then also followed that up with a focus group, not only of city council and also of department heads, but we included a community stakeholder focus group as well, made up of business leaders and community leaders, which was really important to get their, get their feedback. In addition, we had a very successful community-wide input meeting, which we called the World Cafe event. We had over 80 people in attendance at that, and got a lot of feedback on, on what was needed in the city of Marshall, and its important aspects, some positive aspects about the city of Marshall as well. One of the items, I'll kind of interject in this timeline as well, which isn't in this particular slide, but it is incorporated into the strategic plan, is we also implemented a branding project in 2019, and the branding project did a lot of data research for us as well, and I've included some information that was extrapolated from their work in communicating the vision for the city of Marshall. We then had a marathon-long session in November, if we remember that, with the city council and staff. That got a little long at the end, but I appreciated all your input on that and, and your dedication to doing what we needed to do. We didn't quite get where we needed to be, and so really, from the end of November to today, I've worked with staff on developing some of the goals, and we, in addition, sent out the draft strategic plan through, through the chamber business membership, and they provided comment. I think we got over 80 comments from different individuals on their comments about strategic plan, everything from the standard, lower your property, lower the property taxes, to a really good plan, to some of the, some of the items maybe aren't detailed enough, and I'll cover why that may not be. And then here we are in February for a strategic plan approval with the city council. I think it's important for the city council to, to give approval to this. It really is, it really should be your vision and where you want to see the city of Marshall go, and especially what, what you want to see staff work on in the next five years. So a little information on strategic planning versus operational planning. I really want to make sure we kind of know what the difference is. Really, the strategic decisions, I always like to say this, especially to city council, is we really like to keep your responsibility at the 30,000-foot level, because that's where you needed, you need to point us in the right direction and, and cast that vision out to staff. Staff are the ones who are really in the trenches doing what you want us to do. So it's an overarching plan. That's why for some of the goals, they're, they are somewhat vague in some of the areas, and we'll have operational and staff meetings on, on breaking that down. They're usually longer-term in terms of how we want to go about this. You'll see on some of the timelines, we're pretty ambitious, but we've also included a note at the end that we're going to try to revisit this on a regular basis. So unfortunately for staff and maybe for council, you never really stop doing strategic planning. You really are in a continual process of, of doing the plan, either by reviewing and/or updating on a, on a regular basis. The other key part of strategic planning and why we need council and community buy-in is we're really looking at this as kind of a stamp of approval on devoting resources to particular initiatives that staff are going to work on. And we may, when we come before council with specific requests, staff may frequently reference the strategic plan document when there's an ask in the budget or a request on a city council agenda item, noting that this is in our strategic plan. And then in, in opposite of that, or maybe in parallel, just to kind of show you what operational planning is, is it's really the day-to-day implementation, they're more immediate implications, and they're more tactical, and what I like to call is kind of more of the nuts and bolts of, of the day-to-day work. And I can tell you that when, when I meet with staff annually during a performance evaluation, we talk about their department and their goals for the upcoming year, and of course, there's staff meetings on a regular basis. So that's where we really conduct the operational planning, is those one-on-one staff meetings and/or the group staff meetings that we have. So again, just the different areas where we received input, city council, city staff, I don't have this segregated out, but they were also a focus group, which is our EDA board. It was important to get feedback from them, including the other areas. Very common themes recited, not only in our focus groups, our surveys, the World Cafe, but you can kind of see the different topics that are mentioned over and over again, economic development, housing, infrastructure, inclusivity, embracing diversity, welcoming newcomers. I will point out one of the issues that we don't specifically, specifically address in the strategic plan, it's not that we didn't note it, based on the input received, which was childcare. We had a discussion about, you know, what is the need and who's best to kind of look at solving that problem. We didn't know at this particular time, for the next five years, if it would be the best rule for the city. We know that the county has had some interest in developing a program to help support childcare, and, and also the chamber has done a lot of work in having informational meetings and determining how best to go about that. So it's, it's important to us, we did listen, but it's not a specific area in this strategic plan. Again, we can look at it, because this is an evolving document, and see if we want to include that in the future. We did go through a SWOT analysis, a very typical tool when doing strategic planning, looking at your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Again, here, you want to see some common themes. I'll point out here, SFSU was a strength, it's an opportunity, potential threat, we know there's some challenges there, but a great institution that we mentioned throughout our strategic plan and some of our goals. The next two or three slides is some slides that we got from our branding, branding data. We actually did a pre-launch of our branding project today with some key business leaders. The mayor was present today as well, along with our branding team, and we're really excited to release that on March 4th at State of the City. And it'll take some resources to implement that too, but we're really excited, and we think that that really fits in well, the strategic plan and the, and the branding research data. But I'm not going to go through all this, but just some reoccurring themes about what our assets are. Again, SFSU, swans, major employers, parks and recs, recreation for the city, high marks, our school system, high marks. Some of our challenges, and I want to, you know, point out that the, the areas where there's asterisks, that meant that they were mentioned many times, the mall being one of them, not business-friendly. In particular, you know, this, this particular data was actually surveyed not that long after chasing our tails. I just want to point that out, that might have had some influence, but at the same time, it was a thorough research or data, and we surveyed over 800 people. So I believe the data, and I don't want to dispute what people were thinking and sharing when they provided this to the, to the group doing our branding. when they provided this to the, to the group doing our branding. And we really looked at this opportunities as well and tried to incorporate that into our goals for the strategic plan. So next two slides, vision and mission statement. You know, vision, you know, what do we want to be? It's kind of casting out long range and, and setting a high mark for ourselves. And this was developed by our council and staff during the November session. We were able to get that done fairly soon at the top of the agenda. But growing an inclusive and engaged community through collaboration and commitment as a vibrant regional center. And then our mission statement, which is, has a little tendency towards operational, and I'll point this out on the strategic plan. You know, we still have to do our jobs and staff have some really core vital services that need to be provided. You don't see a lot of that in here. I mean, we don't have a lot related to public safety. We may not have a lot related to engineering or public infrastructure, but it's really important to us and we'll continue to do that. That, that's how we're going to meet our mission statement, which is providing valued services in a fair and equitable manner for our community. So our strategic priority areas, building community, communication engagement, embrace and promote diversity and economic development. Some of the comments we got back was, well, building community and economic development are really the same. And we did originally have those combined, and we also had some comments that communication and engagement, embrace and promoting diversity were also similar, and those could have been combined. But we separated them out for, to kind of highlight the work in those areas. We also think four strategic priority areas offers, offers a nice balance for the strategic plan. I will note that an earlier draft of the strategic plan and maybe what you had in your council packet, one of the goals was inclusion. It was not embrace and promote diversity. We had some comments back from the public, was inclusion the right word and should it be expanded? And so we actually did listen to the input and we changed the, the goal to be embrace and promote diversity. We think that might be a better description than just inclusion. I'm not going to read all this, but this is in your packet on what each of those priority areas mean. And I'm going to just cover some of the specific goals. Again, not in the essence of time, not going to cover every single bullet point, but I do want to highlight a few things from each slide. Building community, one of the goals under that is to contribute to making Marshall a destination city. One of the top things we have is market the city brand. It is more than a logo and a tagline, and it's going to take a lot of support to, to kind of really embrace that. We met with Shwans earlier today, the mayor and I did, and they were really impressed with the city brand and, and they're willing to do whatever they can to help, help support it too. Their hiring talent, how we communicate the value of the city is really important to them, to bring employees into their workforce. So I'll point that out as, as one of the objectives under this particular goal. Supporting arts, culture, rec and sport to enrich our community. This is something Marshall has been really great at, doesn't really need maybe a specific goal in our strategic plan, but we don't want to lose sight of that. It's very important to us. Here we mention our community pool, and that is a goal for staff and the council, I hope in 2020, I know it is for staff. We do have a World Cafe type event scheduled for the end of April. We want to get more community input. We know that we've had a really good committee on this, including council member Meister being a supporter, and we've done surveys as well, but we really want to open it up to the entire community and get some engagement on, on what they'd like to see for that pool. In this particular slide, we also, also mention looking into adopting a park program, which Preston has done some communication on this already. He has a senior citizens center that has interest in doing this, but we want to open it up to other people who want to invest in places that they love, and it ranks high among our community to, for our parks and rec. Exploration of a campground, either private or public. We've had lodging issues, could camping, which is growing, obviously nationwide, could that be a particular venue that we could look into? So it's, we're not committing to developing one, but we'd like to explore what it would take. An indoor playground, a lot of communities our size have amenity, indoor park, recreation, someplace to go in the wintertime. That was a comment that was found through the data and research. We want to explore that. And then collaboration, we know the YMCA has needs, SMSU for their pool, some of their rec programs. We want to really engage with them as well. Building community, prioritize capital improvements throughout the city to enhance resident and visitor experiences. So here again, we want to talk a little bit about entrance signs. This relates a little bit to branding. We don't have great designation when we enter the city of Marshall as far as welcoming residents and noting that you are in the city of Marshall. We want to look at that. It's very expensive to have signage, and that might be one reason we haven't done a lot of it, but we do want to explore that, at least put it out there. Continue our investment in bike-friendly community. We're at the bronze level. We want to get to the silver level, and it takes some commitment from staff and the community to do that. And then trees, again, Preston has done a lot of work on, on trees. He, you know, we put this in here that we want a tree inventory, we want a tree maintenance plan, and we want to ensure that we continue to have a city that looks great and provides a lot of great amenities with the trees that we have, so. Housing development, big thing here that we're going to try to look at besides continuing to support it with incentives and through economic development. We may have to look at updating our housing study. It is at the point where it probably needs to be updated. We've got the most recent one, we did tax increment financing. Block 11 has some housing in there, which we're promoting, the use of tax increment financing. We're basing the use of public dollars on this housing study and, and to continue to promote the use of public dollar for housing, we have to back it up with data. And that data has to be good. So that's a goal in this particular area. Promote partnerships with the community assets. This is that collaboration piece. We're all really, really busy, staff, council, our community partners, but we need to meet with SMSU and YMCA and our nonprofits, and we need to work harder at it and, and devote more time. Actively engage with the community. This is on communication. Couple of things here, I'll point out, an annual report. We have an annual audit, we have an EDA report. Not everybody gets to see it. Is there a way, is there a way to kind of incorporate the two, add some specific messaging about Marshall that's positive and put it out to more people widespread? Maybe we do an insert in the, in the newspapers. Maybe we make it available in different venues. I think we can do that on a relatively affordable basis, and I think it would be great. I do also put in here in this goal, a mobile application. Our website's getting redesigned. We want it to be more mobile-friendly, but would, it'd be nice to kind of continue to support that with other mobile applications. Few more slides and I'm almost done. Hopefully I'm not running over my time. Embrace and support diversity. We know that our county partners through the Human Services Agency is looking at establishing a, a committee on equity and diversity, and they've asked the city to be a participant in this. So we really want to help with that in any way we can. I also mentioned here, looking at forming a youth commission. Again, just an exploration, should we do that? I believe we have a student member on community services boards. We have a little bit of an impact there, but more. They weren't really represented at the World Cafe event, and we'd like to see more participation by them. There's some other cool stuff in there too. Otter Tail County right now has got a really great program. If you're a newcomer to the county, they have existing community leaders who sign up and take that person out to lunch. It's a connection point for that newcomer, and it helps build, build bridges to other connections. And I think we can emulate that in the city of Marshall, and we'll use the chamber to help us with that. We need them, we need them for that. Creation, retention, growth of businesses. It's, it's the last in the strategic plan, but it's obviously a top priority. Continue focus on incentives, SMSU. We need to communicate our economic development tools and also just generally data about the city of Marshall. We have really good labor availability here, our tax rate, you know, some of our housing information. It's kind of scattered right now, and we need to put it in, into one toolbox and hand that out. Grow the city's position as a regional center. Yeah, though we've kind of gone back and forth a little bit with the county and the EDA, but I think we feel pretty good about fostering some partnership there. I think they have interest in partnering in the EDA again, and we'll have Maren help us with that. They helped pick her as our Economic Development Authority Director. So that'll get us some buy-in. I'll just mention here too, the airport, I want to mention, that gets mentioned a few times here about, you know, can we get something going there? We have a master plan, it's not complete yet, but if we can get that closer to where we need to be, that would be great. Here I want to point out one thing that's really important. We want to engage with the mall ownership again. I know that our city assessor has had some conversations with the mall ownership for other reasons, likely to discuss valuation, and I know that past EDA has done some work on trying to get something going there. We really need to do something there. It's a comment that was brought up throughout our branding. It would help SMSU in a variety of different ways. So I don't know how far we'll get. We may be challenged, but I think we should try again on, on the mall. And the last slide, on smart growth, comprehensive plan update. It's a 1996 document. We have an RFP ready to go, and we're just kind of waiting until mid to late summer to, to get it to, to the council. And we're going to hire a consultant because it's a big document, it's really important we do this right. So that's in there. One other thing that's in here is the, we want to form a lobby group cohort, whatever you want to call it, on tax competitiveness. South Dakota beats us bad, not just for Marshall, but the state of Minnesota, and we need to figure out a way to make us more competitive in the tax structure. Morehead has some incentives that we don't have, and they won't let us in on their program. We've talked to them, they want their own. So we might have to do our own and see what we can do. So the next few slides, which I'm not going to cover, we have stated the goal, we put who's going to be responsible, and city council's mentioned quite a bit here, so is the EDA Board. What is our priority? When do we think we can complete it? And so I'm going to roll through those, and I'm going to get to the last slide. The next steps. What happens next? We want to start turning these ideas into reality. Dan Herman, Chief Operating Officer for Runnings, who's also on our EDA Board, said, "The worst thing that can happen right now is you do nothing." So this plan is really important, and I, I, I know that it's going to be a focus of, for myself and the staff, and we'll be reviewing it on a off basis. And some action items for follow-up, monitoring and evaluation, deviating from the plan. What I need the city council to do is think at that 30,000-foot level, and when you see something in another community, or you read something, please share that. We got a lot of input on what's wrong with Marshall. It's really hard to get the solutions. It took a long time to kind of come up with some of these, and they're not that great. They could be more specific, they could maybe be more ambitious. So if you have further ideas, we want to incorporate them in here. And so, you know, read, see, report, that'd be really good, because this is just really kind of basic, and I think it can be better. And you can provide that because you're at that 30,000-foot level. So that is the strategic plan for 2020, 2024. I can answer any questions, and I am requesting approval by the city council.
Thank you, Sharon. The, and also thank you for your leadership and your hard work on this. I think this has really been a monumental task to take all of the input, including the input from the various public meetings, the city council session, the staff session, and then incorporate that into a, really a measurable document that has really specific items that are in there. Thank you to the staff that's also worked on this. Thank you to the council that invested, you know, a substantial amount of time, as well as thank you to the public that provided a lot of input. So with that, the open up for any questions or input for Sharon? Is there a motion to adopt the strategic plan?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? I think the discussion item I would have or add, and I think Sharon, you said this, with the adoption of the, of the strategic plan, that's the start of the work. There's a lot of work that has gone into it, but now you have that roadmap that will be the continuation of work on specific items that are defined in the strategic plan. Any other discussion on the motion?
Just questions. Is this going to be published in a little bit more hard copy form for both public, city council, EDA, I mean, everybody that's involved?
Yeah, we are, we, we're going to present part of this during the State of the City next week as well. And yeah, we're really just waiting for the adoption by the council before putting it out there more globally. So we can now do that if, if the council approves tonight.
I know, I, kind of like hard copy comes in handy at times, even though it's not always the greatest thing, so.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number 14. Agenda item number 14 is the wastewater treatment facility improvement project, an update on how this project is going.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update on our, our project. Pretty much got started late last summer. It's a, it's going to take place over a couple of years, so we're progressing along. You don't see a whole lot of action out there yet, but just equipment delivery and ordering is a, a big, long step to getting, getting some of these projects done. So we're in the process of that, working with the contractor, trying to make sure we got a, a good schedule of, of when we can kind of take certain parts of our treatment system offline and still maintain treatment. So the biggest part of this project is replacing existing equipment, so it's, it really causes a lot of interruptions in our process when you got to take a part of the system down to, to work on it and replace it. So just a quick overview, this is, this is a, a overview of the treatment plant itself. One of the big things that you can kind of see now is they started right over in this area, that's the big concrete sludge storage tank that they're building. That's a 2 million gallon concrete storage tank. We'll see some pictures of that a little bit further in the, in the slide. In this building here, we have some existing mixing pumps and valves that are being replaced. Come back over here, we've got one of these trickling filters. We're in the process of removing all the media out of that right now. That will be completely rebuilt. The concrete's deteriorated and the roof and the walls are deteriorating, so they need a lot of work. Brand-new media, brand-new trickling filter distributor systems. This intermediate clarifier over here, the mechanism there will be replaced. You come back over replaced. Uh, you come back over to this system here, that's our activated sludge system. In the bottom of those, there's the fine bubble diffusers that, uh, we add oxygen back in to keep the bacteria alive and, and mixed. Uh, that's all being replaced. Um, come back in this building, we have some pumps that are original 1975, being replaced. Uh, blowers from 2003 being replaced. Uh, adding another final clarifier over in this area. Uh, some work down in the ATAD projects there, and the preliminary building, replacing some equipment. So, quite a, quite a wide variety of, of equipment replacement. Uh, this is just a quick summary I just put together for year-end totals for 2019. That was our highest flow year in history. Uh, you look down at the bottom, I'm not sure if you can see that. We treated about 1.25 billion gallons of water last year in, in 2019. Uh, some of the other totals of the loadings we're getting with the BOD and the TSS, ammonia's, phosphorus's. That last one over there is chlorides. Um, we're working with MMU on the softening plant to try eliminate chlorides. Uh, we treated about, or we didn't treat it. We had about 5 million pounds of chloride come into the treatment plant in 2019. That gives you an idea of the impact of what water softeners are really doing This is one of the, the equipment that just got replaced. Uh, this is a grid classifier. It's when the water first comes into the treatment plant. Uh, that was a, uh, old piece of equipment that was completely rotted out. Uh, so we got the new one up and running and that went very, very well. The trickling filters I was talking about, these are the two towers. These are precast concrete. Um, we're rebuilding one completely, this west one here. Taking, there's, there's 24 feet of plastic media in there. We'll see some pictures of what that looks like. Completely removing that, that's from 1993. It's getting brittle. The distributors were wore out, uh, like say a lot of concrete deterioration. So, that one's getting rebuilt and we'll put new roofs on, on, uh, just roofing membrane on the, both of them. Here's the inside of that trickling filter tower. Like I say, if you, you look at that floor in there, that's all stacked full of 24 feet of two-by-two-by-four-foot bales of those plastic media. The distributor goes around on top and it sprinkles that water over there, and as the water trickles down through that 24 feet of media, that's where our bacteria are growing on those surface areas. As the water trickles through that, as the bacteria are grabbing all the waste out of the water, and that's what they're consuming for, for food. So, it's a very, very efficient treatment system. Here they're removing some of those bales to get an idea what those look like. Um, they've been working about 10 days on that already, removing those out one by one. Um, there you can see that they've come a long ways. They're just about done now. Uh, the center column is where the distributor sits up here. Um, you can see down here is a, there's some concrete planks. That's the actual floor. So, there's only like one layer left in there. Um, the water trickles through and then it'll run through those channels. But you can see a lot of deterioration on the walls up here. Uh, the, the roof itself is, is really, uh, bad shape too. Here they're throwing the bales into basically big roll-off dumpsters, and then they take an excavator and smash them down, just to drag it a little bit more in the dumpsters.
They're going to make water bottles out of those, right Bob?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah. There's plenty of them there, actually. This is a, the intermediate clarifier. I talk about, you know, pull the cover off of this tank and then pull all the guts out of here. The new catwalk and, and distributor and scraper arms and stuff will be replaced. This is the activated sludge system. There's, we've got four channels in here, and, uh, these are 15 feet deep each. And this is, the bottom is, is a complete grid of fine bubble aeration systems. Those are getting completely plugged. Uh, we're not able to get the oxygen transfer we need anymore. That's what the bottom of that, that looks like. Uh, every year we take these basins down, pressure wash all those ceramic stones off, and then we put an acid on them to try to help eat that, uh, calcium buildup and try to get them open and functioning again. So that, all this whole grid will be replaced. These are the blowers that are actually adding the oxygen for those aeration diffusers. Uh, we've had three of these 200 horsepower blowers. They're just about to the end of their life cycle. One is completely bad. The other one's real shaky and the other one we're just hanging on to with, for now. So, all three of those are replaced with a little smaller unit. Uh, it's going to be a lot more efficient. We're going to have a lot better air control through these things. A lot of automated system, which will kind of raise and slow, uh, lower the speed of the, the blowers to be a lot more energy efficient.
Bob, are you actually pumping oxygen in or is it just atmospheric?
Just atmospheric air. Yep. Yep. Those fine, fine bubble diffusers just, it, it just breaks up real nice. You're familiar with a, a stone in an aquarium. That's kind of what they're, they're doing. So, they... These are, uh, final clarifier pumps. Uh, these are original 1975 equipment. Uh, they're getting to really tough shape. Uh, they still actually make the same model, so we, we looked hard and we're able to get the same models. So, they, they really serve their life, I tell you. They've been a good pump. And then, uh, we currently have two final clarifiers. Uh, we're going to be adding a third final clarifier. This has always been a bottleneck in the treatment plant. When we get the real high flows, uh, we can't maintain treatment and get the water through these clarifiers. So, that third clarifier will be able to get us a lot more flow through the plant and still maintain good treatment. Here we're coming into the, the new bio solids storage tank, that, uh, concrete tank out there. Um, give you an idea, there's, uh, just see how much steel is actually in that floor. That floor is 35 inches thick of concrete. Uh, there was 1,400 yards of concrete poured in one day. It's about 140 concrete trucks that were tooling around out there. Alex came out with a drone and he shot an overhead of that as they were pouring those. I wish he would have got there a little earlier. We had two of those pump trucks set up, so they were actually dumping four concrete trucks at a time throughout the day to get those poured. You can see there's four cells in there. That, that's going to give us a lot better control and operation of our bio solids, uh, decanting and, and just storage. There's a form in the walls. Those walls are 29 feet tall. Um, they're about 30 inches thick. Can just give you an idea how much steel is. It's kind of hard to see here, but how much steel actually goes in those concrete walls too. They set up, uh, different forms in different areas. They had like four, or 12, 12 different pours to get those walls There again, you can see, kind of, this is getting close to the end. They're pouring, we can see where the forms are, just filling in that one section of wall. There again, they use a concrete pump truck to, to pump that concrete up in there, and then they drop it down in the wall and just kind of keep filling the wall all the way up until they can get to the top. There, it's pretty much complete. Um, this area over here is going to be the mixing gallery. There'll be mixing pumps and electrical room and piping gallery in there. That's precast, uh, walls and roof on that, so that'll go up real fast. Here's a picture of the inside of one of those, those tanks there. There's three columns, which, the roof is actually poured onto this one too, so they have to shore it all up, and then these columns will help support the roof in each one. You can see at the far, far end over there, there's a mixing header pipe coming through that will, will have good mixing in these tanks. Um, and then there's four decant, smaller pipes in the wall there that help us, uh, de-water the sludge and get it thicker, so we don't have to haul so much. This in our ATAD, uh, building, um, these big jet mix pumps here, um, these are the last two that we have that were cast iron. Uh, we've, we've found that with this project from 2007, we're eating right through those volutes with the, the gritty material that we get in high temperatures. So, these are the last two cast iron ones. They'll be stainless steel switched out for us. And then we, these valves are all rotted out, so we'll have to change those out too. This is a existing mixing building for our blue tanks out there. Uh, this pump is wore out. A lot of these valves too, we can't close and, and operate the system the way we need to, so they'll be replaced. And this is the last step of treatment here. It's our post-aeration, doing the same thing. We have fine bubble diffusers on the bottom of this. We just add oxygen back into the water prior to sending it to the river. This is where we discharge out, just north of the tree dump there. I don't know if everybody knows where that's at or not, but discharging back into the Redwood River there. That's it. That's kind of a quick overview. Um, I think everything's going good out there. We, we should be pretty much on schedule. Um, I don't, like I say, we, we can't take some systems off when we get our high spring flows and some of that storage tank stuff for the bio solids. We have to have it hauled out in the fall and get the tanks empty before we can work on it. So, it's a lot of staging, but, uh, you know, we, we're moving right along. So, any questions?
Thank you, Bob. You want to introduce your staff that's here too?
Well, yeah, I got a couple of my staff members too. Scott Trudson is my Assistant Superintendent, and Roger Cowles, just, uh, just about a year ago, took over for Larry Pofleit as the Collection System Assistant Superintendent. So, there...
Good. Thank you, Bob. Questions for Bob?
I just have one quick question. Our high inflows last year, these record levels, that to do with moisture, the rain? What, I mean, plain and simple?
Yeah. Yep. Um, you know, sump pumps, I, I know are a big issue. We're, we're working hard trying to eliminate those. Um, just with, uh, we got about 1,000 miles of sanitary sewer buried, and everybody's home services are connected. That's probably another, at least 1,000 miles of, of pipe buried. And if your little crack, when you get the groundwater levels this high, it just seeps in and, and it gets, it could be a tough issue. But, you know, we've had several months that are, were in the spring, and then, you know, all the way through the year, we ended up with high flows. So, we went into the, the freeze-up with actually very high water tables yet, so.
So, through the course of all our sewer replacements, street replacements, this should be improving. I guess the point I'm trying to get, we'd be a lot worse positioned if we went to start, started these repairs 20 years ago.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yep. No, we can, we can tell. It's, it's, it's expensive and it's, uh, it's time-consuming to get this stuff replaced, but, uh, it's definitely a need, so.
Thanks, Bob. And Craig.
Yeah, and just then, Bob makes a great point, is that while he talks about 1,000 miles of city-owned pipe, that other 1,000 miles we don't own, but we serve it. Okay? So, as we look for opportunities to work with our homeowners on some of the improvements, that's one thing that some of the cities are considering, is cooperating with either a grants or loans program to help people that need help financing to upgrade their services in and out of the house, because especially on the older homes, like in my neighborhood, back in the day when we had combined sewer, it was beneficial to have that additional water going because they ran combined. So, there was little, if any, treatment, and they liked to have that extra water to keep the lines clean. Well, now, some of these homes may have foundation footing drains and stuff that don't go to sump pumps, but might be hooked directly in to the city sewer. So, as we move forward and we look for opportunities, that's probably the next place we look. Now, we've got a system in there that can handle a lot of the surcharge flow, but we should look at opportunities of getting the flow out that doesn't need treatment.
Well, and bringing it up, Craig, there's, uh, cities, it's becoming more and more common, where, and we're not, I hope we don't put this on you, but they're inspecting homes before they sell.
Right.
To make sure there's no, um...
Cross-connections.
Yes, thank you. Cross-connections into those.
Right. And then it might be an opportunity. You know, I don't, we don't want to punish our homeowners for what they have, but by the same token, when there's an opportunity to improve, we need to, we need to encourage that, and if we need to participate, or if there's an opportunity to participate, we should always keep an open mind as a city to do that.
Other question for Bob?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
We're talking about sump pumps. I'd just like to mention that I, we believe that our number one opportunity is identifying those cross-connects and, and getting rid of them. Sump pump connections to the sanitary sewer are extremely detrimental to the system. It only takes a handful of them to start to surcharge a pipe system. So, it's, it's definitely our number one opportunity, even probably before service line replacement, is identifying those cross-connects.
And we do have an ordinance that prohibits that, and it's a matter of being able to enforce it. So, it really takes cooperation from the homeowners. If they understood the real strain that they put on their neighbor when they do that, they'd realize that it's, it's not a joke. It, it's very serious.
I can just give you a quick highlight. You know, just, you don't think much about your sump pump running into the sewer, but if your sump pump's running every two minutes, you're probably in an hour putting more water into that sanitary sewer than you do with your regular sanitary sewers the rest of the month. That just gives you an idea how much you get.
Did my wife do those calculations for you about 20 years ago?
Yeah, I remember that.
Bob, just a question, just for our, our public information, completion date? And my second question is, has there been anything that come up during the construction so far that's been unexpected?
Uh, there's been a few small things. Uh, we do have an allowance built into the contract, so we're without change orders.
Nothing that's...
But no, no, nothing. Uh, and, and that's the hard part about a remodel. You gotta remember that a lot of this, we didn't know what we were getting into until you tear into it. So, but so far, everything's been, been looking real good.
And a completion date, um, for information to...
Uh, we're hoping end of '21 probably, before everything's complete.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
With that, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
We'll move then to, um, agenda item number five was the item that was removed from the consent agenda. This is, consider the approval of the amended 2020, 2021 employee wage schedule. Russ, you had the question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, just, and I would like to just, uh, some additional information. When I was working, you know, for 30-some-plus years, whenever there was a position that opened up, we always took a look at it staff-wise and say, do we need to continue with the position? Do we need to eliminate the position? Do we need to combine the position to do whatever? Um, I just, I, I'm, I'm going to ask the Personnel Committee to share their thoughts when I, when I get done. Um, because I, I personally feel that, I go back in history, we had a number of, uh, number of projects going on within the city of Marshall, and I think that was the need to hire an assistant city engineer. I'm not sure if we have the same amount of projects today as we did, you know, when that, when that situation happened. Maybe we do, and maybe I need to be informed. But I take a look at, we've added streets, we've added parks, we've added, uh, more mileage and things like that, but yet we still operating with, with basically the same number of street employees, basically the same number of wastewater employees. So, I'm just taking a look. I just want information. Um, you, you look at, and again, I hated this terminology as much as anybody in our corporation. They said, you know, as the economy being what it is, I mean, we read every, every single day, or we hear in the news every single day that, you know, the workforce is being eliminated. Cuts are being, whether they're being shipped over to China, whether they're being shipped down south or being brought into Minnesota, whatever the case would be. But you have all sorts of different changes happening with the economy. Um, I don't think that's any difference here in Marshall. I think that our economy is pretty strong. I think that, that people sometimes might get the impression that it's not as strong as, as some other people think. So, I think it's, we, we have to take a look at the position. I'm, and I'm, I'm asking if the Personnel Committee would probably relay some of those feelings. I know this assistant engineer position is funded through the MMU, um, collaboration, and I understand that, but, uh, one of the things that, that we always adopted when I was working was that can we do, or we have to do as much or more with less. And I didn't like that terminology as much as anybody, but, um, sometimes we had to take a, a basic look into things, and, and basically financial, that's what it is. If we need, uh, if we need another, uh, person or employee in the street department, do we need a second city engineer? That's what I, I, in my own mind, I don't have that answer. And I, and I guess, and that's why I bring it up, that I would like the Personnel Committee to maybe to share some of their thoughts, and maybe I'm way off, way off board, way off track, and I just need to be more informed. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I can start a little bit with that, Russ. I mean, you bring up a valid, valid point that we always need to evaluate our positions. The, um, you know, when that position was added, it was, the alternative was additional, uh, consulting contracts. And this was having it in-house, which actually our city engineer in-house, our communities that, uh, contract everything out, but that, in our analysis, a number of years ago, was far more expensive to the projects, and ultimately, not necessarily to the, the levy, but to the, uh, project, total project costs, much of which was assessed. Now, you asked for the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start out as, as Chairman of that committee, and, and Russ, those are great questions, and I think it's, it's a good conversation, especially for us to have, uh, in front of our constituents. And Personnel Committee spent a good bit of time discussing this with HR and, and with the engineering, uh, with our, with our engineering team. And, um, they did a, a very good job of explaining the work that they do and justifying the additional position, and then also consulting with some of the other entities, both within the city, but also like the county and the private sector that they interact with, and having those services in-house with the city, especially when we have the projects going, because we are the project owner. Um, I think it's a strong advantage to have... we are the project owner. I think it's a strong advantage to have them on-site along with the support staff, with the technicians that they have, because that keeps us, in most of our projects, from having to hire that, not only the engineering, but also that technician, the project oversight. I think you can see some of the value to that if we actually look back to some of the services that we charge ourselves back for, because in order to keep budget items in line, obviously, you know that we charge a lot of our engineering services back to our own projects. And so it does show up as some line items in the budget, but we do look at it, and I think the workload, you know, engineering was pretty open to the fact that, look, we could, you know, we could subs, you know, we could contract for outside services for the makeup work, certainly wouldn't be a cost savings. And the other piece that we would lose, because not only does engineering serve the city, they also serve MMU, the Marshall Municipal Utilities. And, and like you said, Russ, they do contribute, I believe it's 60,000?
65,000 minimum.
Yep, 65,000 minimum per year towards that Assistant Engineering position, and if we did not have that, they would no longer contribute that to our engineering department. And depending on the projects, and there's been some big MMU projects that our engineering staff has spent a lot of time on, but I think it's, I think it's a good, I think it's a good budget. In my opinion, it's a good budget item for, for the city and for MMU. Granted, they're part of the city, but they're, but they are separate. You know, they run as their own financial entity. The recommendation that, the conclusion that we came from with the Personnel Committee and the recommendation that we have is to support this.
Sharon?
Yeah, I just want to add that this was specifically brought up to the Personnel Committee. I know you kind of alluded to that, Councilmember Schaefer. And also, I didn't realize you were gonna bring this up tonight. Otherwise, I would have brought some data, but it's not just the 65,000, it's the engineering fees that, again, that Councilmember Schaefer mentioned. We can quantify that. It's, it's far and away a lot greater than $65,000 per year. And then the third thing I just kind of want to mention, and I don't know if this was specifically discussed at Personnel, but I do think we want to set up the Public Works Director in a position to succeed, and I think not having the support of an Assistant Engineer could result in something fatal. And Jason can speak to that more than, than I can, but I think the, the services that would be provided by Assistant isn't just money. It is work that needs to be done, supervision of staff, and right now, we're in transition, and Jason's doing both of it. He cannot, he cannot continue to do both. It just isn't gonna, it isn't gonna work. So I just want to kind of say, we do have some numbers that would quantify it. I wasn't able to bring it here tonight. I didn't realize you were gonna bring this up. So, but we did discuss that personnel as well.
John?
Yeah, just, I had the same thing that, and like it's been said, you know, it was discussed. You know, a number of things we're trying to do, and as we look at, really, each of these, as job descriptions are brought, you'll see an evolution of really all the work that's been going on within engineering over the last few years. It's been evolving, and some switching around to try to streamline and improve the efficiency. And yeah, we did really come to the agreement that, yes, this position is needed. We needed not only pass a transition, and really for MMU, which, you know, if it saves MMU money, it saves the city money. So, you know, all of these really kind of came into a play on it. The other aspect is, one of the thing that I know the Engineering Department is trying to do is to make sure that we can not only keep a good pace on getting things through and permits issued and everything else, but try to accelerate that. So we're trying to, you know, keep things moving as quick a pace as possible. And, you know, it just simply needs, you need the people there at the time, and the work is there, it's, needs to get done, and it's getting covered, so.
Any other input?
Jason.
Hi.
Jason, I think.
Jason.
Would you mind if I spoke for a minute, Mayor?
A minute would be fine, yeah.
One minute. I think, I think that's a fair thing to bring up, whenever you look at hiring somebody to ask, is that a necessary position? And I just wanted to reiterate my feelings that it absolutely is. When you look at quantity of projects that are going on in the community at any given time, that's a fraction of the work that the Engineering Office gets done on behalf of the city every day. There's a lot of work on behalf of other departments that gets done quickly and efficiently because we're in-house. There's a lot of response to the public, to the contractors, to the city departments, because we're in-house. And I, I look at it, since I've been here, I've been looking at probably a laundry list of things that I want to do, policies, procedures, ordinance updates, many, many more that I don't have a list today because I wasn't ready for this, but we've done very little of it, and that's because there's not time to do that. Also, there's gains to be had in our MS4 program, where we're not doing everything to the level that I'd like to see it. And there's a lot of these things kind of throughout that we, we want to clean up, but we, we need to get staffing in, and we need to get it organized how we think would be the most effective. So that's my one minute. I'll be done.
Thank you, Jason.
Mr. Mayor, and I would just like to thank other council members, Jason and everybody else, because as a council member, I need to be aware of this, and I was totally unaware of the discussion that was had in Personnel Committee, so maybe that's something that could be, in the future, moving forward, that maybe just a short recap, so us uninformed council members could be informed a little bit more. So, yeah, thank you.
With that, you have it.
Oh, yes.
Jason, I think you mentioned 65,000, was it? How many years has they been paying that amount, then?
You know, maybe our mayor would be better equipped to answer that, but I would say probably since very near the time we first started hiring that Assistant in, '07, '08.
I was both, Mayor.
Yeah.
I guess what I was wondering is if, maybe it's time for some inflation increases, and that would help as far as the budget, and.
That's also a fair, that's fair input, and that's something that we can have discussions with, but probably should reiterate that I don't know that we've ever actually been paid only 65,000 from our utility. I think it's usually been significantly more due to just percentage share of project costs. So it, that's just a baseline minimum. If we do zero projects for MMU in a given year, they will pay us that for our services and our on-call response and our communications. It usually ends up being significantly more than that.
So it's usually more than that, so it?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
And when it first started, the baseline was 50,000, and then a number of years after that, then it was increased.
But as far as the rate that we charge them, I mean, the hourly rate and so forth, has that been adjusted appropriately to?
We do not charge them by the hour. We charge them either that minimum retainer, or we charge them percentage of contract costs. And our percentage of contract costs that we charge is very competitive. You would pay more on the open market.
And so it's a competitive rate that we're charging, though?
It's competitive, yet we believe fair.
Okay, thank you.
Any other input?
And it just, and I want to say as, as on the Personnel Committee, we appreciate the conversation, and we do, Russ, that's a good point to make, but we do really try to bring back the root of what we talk about, and to, you know, in fairness to the time of the council, we try to do our work as the committee and then bring a reasonable report and a recommendation with justification, because these are good questions. And, and the thing that, that really impresses me, and that gives me a lot of comfort being on city council, is we have a large number of employees, and we've got really quality staff. And one of the privileges of being on a council for a city like Marshall is that we have professional staff that are highly skilled in their positions, and they give us absolutely great input, which gives us, I think, makes us better council members too. So I appreciate that, too. We do not do this in, in a vacuum, as you know. I mean, as a council, we get good feedback, good information from our employees, and I think that really helps us make really good decisions. So I appreciate that discussion.
And John?
Yeah, just one thing else, too. You know, I really appreciate the questions bringing forward, because we could be talking about things and, you know, giving a report on a meeting or whatever, that, okay, I already knew about that, I didn't need to know. It's good that you'd bring up questions that you don't, you know, for all of the council members for various committees. I, that's a good way of learning, so I think that's great that you bring them up.
And Mr. Mayor, just one last, well, on last comment, I think, I think staff in the council has made a significant emphasis on communication. In fact, I think we're having a training on communication, sure, in coming up in the, in the very near future. So maybe this is just another part of that communication issue that, that we can address and take a look at. So, thank you for your time.
So with that, you have the recommendation for the amended.
I move approval of the amendment.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Okay, so.
Thing happens.
What we have here is a failure to communicate.
We're gonna reopen the vote?
I can't get mine to submit.
No.
You want us to do a voice vote?
I can manually.
All in paper, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. On the topic of good reporting, good communication, we'll move to Agenda Item Number 15, Commission Board Liaison Reports. Regional Development Commission had their monthly meeting a week ago Thursday, discussed a number of things related to transportation and economic development, and as well as routine business. There was some staff changes with a retirement of the transportation planner and the replacement of that person. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. None of mine have met, however, I do have an update on Merit. Public Safety Director Marshall forwarded me a letter that was sent based on a, on a course that was held at Merit over the weekend. The instructor who taught the class was from Philadelphia. He's from the National Fire Academy, training out Emmitsburg, Maryland. And this was a class that was put on through FEMA, and there were 28 people that attended the two-day training at Merit, and they came from as far away as Rapid City, South Dakota, and Williston, North Dakota. And in the letter, the trainer talked about what a great facility, how welcome it was, what a good job did of hosting, and recommended that the FEMA coordinator and the National Fire Academy continue to use Merit as a, as a partner classroom and as a facility to focus on for classes. So just another good word out to Jasmine, and to Jim, and to all the, all the staff and the, and the committee involved in Merit, and just what happens out there. It's phenomenal, and I think that, that's been just a great asset for the city and for the region, and I just want to thank everybody for the work they've done for that.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. Steve?
EDA met. I was not able to go because of work obligations, so I'll defer that to Councilmember Kramer, and the other two did not meet.
And Glenn?
My commissions have not met.
John?
Okay, EDA did meet. A couple of major topics that we talked about were the EDA Annual Report, reviewing of the draft. We've got a draft in our packet that we all need to go through and just verify the couple of items yet that need to be filled in, but that's going through. There was quite a bit of discussion on Marshall EDA Leadership Development Focus. We're working on trying to get, you know, really ties in, again, with our strategic plan, getting some strategic leadership training going on in a variety of venues that we can bring people in for various commissions, councils, various activities within the city. So we're trying to open that up and have the EDA be somewhat of a leader on that, along with several other groups. MMU also met. Couple of things out of there that I think are of interest. You know, we've heard about the automatic meter reading that's going on. That's pretty much fully active right now and happening. One of the outcomes of that, that you don't always think about or hear about, is that MMU is able to now, on a fairly quick turnaround, be able to watch if perhaps you've got a leak in your house that you're not aware of, and to, they've already notified some customers. And the way it really works is, you know, typically in a residence, it doesn't work in apartments, but in a residence, you know, you get to 2:00 in the morning, there probably isn't much water being used. You'll have some dead time in the, the cycle for a home. And so they're actually monitoring times and getting a report that this residence is taking water pretty much throughout the day for 24 hours. And from that, they can notify the resident saying, hey, you know, you probably want to check, maybe you've got a toilet that's leaking, you got a faucet that's leaking or something. Or worse yet, somebody's line broke in a basement, and they're going away, and they don't know about it. So they can take action with that, and they've had a number of cases already where they notified people that, and found out a couple of days later, yeah, that water stopped running during, you know, all night long, so they got the leak taken care of. Where have, you know, they started to receive applications for the General Manager, replace Brad in his retirement. Last I heard, which is about a week old, they probably had six applicants in already, so it's going through a hiring service that they're working with. If you didn't notice in your handouts, I know it's being promoted, the Bright Energy Choices is out there. What you can do is make the request that the energy that your house or business is using is all renewable resources, and there is actually in the connector that went with the slip, or by contacting MMU, you can figure out what that's gonna cost you for a, it will cost you a little more. It costs a residence is probably around 30, 35 bucks a year, and you're gonna have Missouri River, which is really the master in this, to make sure that they have enough renewable resources purchased to cover that. And so far, they've had 21 signed up, and two, some fairly major commercial businesses doing that. And last, if you noticed in the paper, the ZF charging station is operational out on Tallgrass Liquors, so those with electric vehicles can go out there and get recharged in their smart charger. And along with that, if you're so inclined to buy an electric vehicle, they do offer through, again, through Missouri River and MMU, it's a $700 charger that they're offering, $500 rebate on. So it allows the car to be recharged during the night through really off-peak season, or off-peak hours. So it really doesn't cost you any more on your electricity that way. So that's about it.
Thank you, John. Russ?
Mine have not met.
And Jim?
My Transformation Committee met. They'll be visiting with Jason about bus routes coming up. And then the City Hall Committee did meet. There's some, you know, right now, there are a couple issues, not issues, I shouldn't use that word, small changes that came up. They're cost-neutral changes so far. And we'll be meeting every two weeks, hopefully to give more of an update. I mean, that meeting was more to set up structure, and then, like I said, there's a few cost-neutral issues that came up. When I say cost-neutral, there's no change orders. So I know we have some step issues coming up, which should be a cost savings, actually.
And we're looking for those.
Well, hopefully we have them. We've had a good discussion with the staff about, you know, the committee is pretty much, we have a budget, and we want to stick to it. So other than that, I have nothing.
Very good. We have a few minutes before the public hearing starts, so we'll move on to Councilmember individual items. Jim, starting on your end, anything?
I have nothing.
Russ?
Nothing.
John?
Just, I did attend the construction opening meeting on Monday afternoon, so that was very interesting, just to sit in and listen in on that, saw what they were talking about with the stairs. And, you know, there's gonna be a few odds and ends come through. It's a very fluid schedule. Some areas are already working ahead of schedule, mostly in a demolition. They made considerable progress just already on Monday afternoon, so things are moving along, and it's, it's gonna be changing there very quick.
Craig? The only thing I've got is thanks to City Engineering. There were some complaints in the neighborhood with the warm weather and some packing snow conditions of unmanaged sidewalks, and they got on those very quickly and took care of what I think is a fairly significant safety issue. So thank you for that. Just a reminder, people, clean your sidewalks, clean the ADA ramps.
Steve?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
And Glenn?
I have nothing.
Okay. With that, it is 5:30 PM. We will move to Agenda Item With that, it is 5:30 PM. We will move to agenda item number three, which is the South Fourth Street reconstruction project. We will hold the public hearing on this improvement, and then following the public hearing, if the public hearing is completed by 6:00 PM, then we'll consider the resolution that would order the improvement, preparation of plans. And for those of you that might have just come in, we do need to adjourn by 6:00 PM because it's precinct caucus night. State law says we need to be adjourned prior on or before 6:00 PM. So if we're not completed with the public hearing, we will just continue it then to a next meeting. So I would call on Director of Public Works, City Engineer Jason Anderson, to conduct the public hearing. Jason will make a brief presentation about the project, and then following that, we'll open up for public comment. When we get to the point of public comment, because this is broadcast on Studio 1 TV, I need to ask everybody to come up and utilize the microphone at the podium, and then also, for the record, state your name and your address. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just give a brief project description, and then we can turn it over for public input. But this is a reconstruction project, a complete reconstruction of South Fourth Street from Country Club Drive to Elaine Avenue. The reconstruct consists of sanitary sewer, water main, and storm sewer replacement under this roadway as well. Notable provisions to point out is at this point in time, we're proposing an eight-foot-wide shared-use path on the west side of the road to replace the existing sidewalk. And we're also proposing, per our ordinance requirements and city's past practice, we're proposing a sidewalk on the east side as well, where currently there's not sidewalk today. Now, taking that shared-use path and placing it off the street, with that happening, we're going to take the painted on-street bike trail off of the street. That would be our proposal. And we would narrow the street by three feet to compensate for that lack of bike trail painted on the street. We did have a public informational meeting where the residents along the corridor were invited to come hear a presentation and offer input. At that meeting, a petition was presented to us from, I think it was 10 residents on the east side of the road for no sidewalk on their side of the road, where they do not have it today. So I've included that in the packet for your reference as well. This is a $3.4 million project roughly with contingency and engineering built in. This is on a state aid route, so we will utilize some state aid funds to cover city costs on the project. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. We'll open up now as part of the public hearing for public input from members of the audience that are here, as well as the city council members. So I'd open up for any public input, public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I'll get started if no one's coming forward first. I did receive one call from one resident and had a discussion. Resident is definitely opposed to having sidewalk on the east side of the street. We talked about some of the concerns and did explain that, you know, it is a city ordinance that on all total reconstructions that we are a sidewalk and pedestrian-friendly community, and that it is our intent to support sidewalks in there. This property owner made some very compelling arguments, and it was a pretty detailed conversation, and we talked about concerns about narrowing the street from, what, 44, Jason, I believe, to 41? Is that correct?
Correct. Give or take. It's a little irregular, but yes.
Right. And in talking to Jason, so then after I spoke to the homeowner, I also talked to Jason and had a more in-depth conversation about some of our practices, and it is common for new development that the streets we spec are 41 feet. And so I did do a survey, not a physical on-the-ground survey, I kind of cheated and I used as best I could Google Earth and the measuring device on Google Earth to look at some of the more, the others, what I would consider similar streets and, you know, kind of similar use. And Fourth Street is, in my opinion, unique because it serves two populations. It has the, kind of the transit vehicles that use Fourth Street as a connector from 23 to more of the kind of the downtown area near the West Side School and the Army, and then into connect downtown. Probably not as significant as Country Club or Saratoga, but certainly a connector. And there's a number of multifamily houses there, and there's also a park there. And Jim and I have talked extensively about this, and I think there is other council members that share it. One of the things that we preach here is pedestrian-friendly, and I've always said that I believe that sidewalks make neighborhoods and neighborhoods make the community. There's been a couple of other projects that were proposed that we also got petitioned on, and they petitioned not have sidewalks. And some, the petitioners prevailed and others, they didn't. I've been on record as opposing that. I believe that unless there's some very extenuating circumstances, I think that sidewalks do make the neighborhoods, and I do think we need to be pedestrian-friendly. And so I've always stayed pretty firm to that. So again, I said that there was some compelling arguments. I wanted to get the conversation started to tell people that if you have a feeling, this is certainly the absolute appropriate time to come forward, and we really want to hear from you and hear what you have to say.
So again, I'll open up for public input from the audience at this time. And since you're first at the podium, you can set the standard by giving your name and property address.
I'm Bernard Wing. I've lived at 712 South Fourth Street for many years, and I've seen the heavy traffic, both pedestrian and cars that go through there. And if you drive there right now with all of the snow we have currently, that it's narrowed to where my nephew parked to come to supper, his car is out in the roadway beyond the bike paths already because of the piles of snow that are there. So unless you're going to restrict parking along there, is that one of the plans, to restrict parking on either side?
That is not.
Okay. Wintertime, you're going to have a problem with the heavy traffic that we have there. Secondly, that there is a lot of foot traffic that uses our side, so I don't, I would agree with my neighbors across the street and the need for other sidewalks, because even the west side takes all of their kids down to the park on our side, and there is a crosswalk crossing into what they call Turtle Park or Freedom Park. A third thing I would mention was that I just finished blowing my snow, and two snowplows come by. Because my boulevard is only about 18 to 24 inches, they cover my sidewalk with snow. And it's the kind of snow that I can no longer snow blow, but I got a hand shovel. So I think with the heavy pedestrian traffic, you're really complicating us trying to maintain the city ordinance to keep our sidewalks clear. Then the third, or last thing I would say is, how much is it going to cost us? They redone this road and our sidewalks not that many years ago, it seems. And I know I preserved my two trees out in front because they narrowed the sidewalk just a little in order to go by my trees, but I'm wondering are you going to widen our sidewalks and take out the few remaining trees that we have? Have you my comments and questions to the board? Thank you.
So I'll ask Jason to kind of respond once we have, you know, other input, and then so we can probably be efficient on use of the time.
All right. Thank you.
So we will respond, or he will respond. Anyone additional that wish to speak?
Thank you.
Yes.
Jordan Carstensen, 801 South Fourth. I'm actually the one that spoke to Craig, a few other members the last couple of weeks. Some of my concerns with that addition of a sidewalk, I'm opposed to it. I live on the east side. With the specs of the project with them narrowing the road, it's also going to be shifted over, and then the amount of space used for a boulevard and a sidewalk would cut off roughly 11 and 1/2 feet of every driveway down that east side. When you cut off 11 and 1/2 feet, you're going to start putting more cars on the road. And as he just mentioned, with all the cars already parked in the road, it's narrowed up pretty good. So by taking a spot away from each driveway, obviously you're going to put more cars out there. With that, I don't know if anybody else is aware with added bus traffic down Fourth. With the addition of that J-turn off of the airport road, they're recommended not to take their buses through that J-turn because the back end swings out. So all those buses are funneled to Fourth Street, back to 23, back to the bus garage, again, adding to more congestion down there and whatnot. I know he had mentioned the foot traffic from the school with the students going to the park. That school's going to be decommissioned in the two years, I believe, and the new school will be down towards Hy-Vee. So there won't be that student foot traffic going north and south on Fourth Street. And again, with that, I know it's ordinance to be placing sidewalks when there's reconstruction projects, but I also know a couple of years ago, when Saratoga was reconstructed, there was no sidewalk put on the east side between Saratoga and 23. So I do know that even though there's ordinances, I don't think every neighborhood is accommodating for everything. And I think this is one of those circumstances with, like Craig said, with how heavily traveled that road is feeding off of 23 into town. I think by putting a sidewalk there is going to add more negativity in the future than it's going to be positive for people walking right there.
Okay. Thank you.
Ask a question. I'm not following you on your 11 and 1/2 feet reduction in driveways. I guess I'm-
When I attended the informational meeting, the way I understood it is the road will be narrowed, but it'll also be shifted to the east.
Okay.
With the addition of that, where I say the 11 and 1/2 feet, with the road shifting a foot and a half, and then proposing a five-foot boulevard and a five-foot sidewalk, now you're cutting the driveways back 11 and 1/2 feet because legally you can't block a sidewalk with your vehicles, you know, and park them there.
Oh, okay. Now I understand what you're saying.
For a extended amount of time.
Okay.
So rather than park there, now you're obviously parking the road.
Okay.
Very good. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a question for Jason here. The sidewalk ordinance that they've been talking about is in Chapter 66 of our ordinances. And Chapter 66 deals with subdivisions. And so is it meant that that chapter is basically for new subdivisions? So if we have a new subdivision, the rules could apply. But for existing subdivisions, aren't they grandfathered in where they would not have to meet those requirements?
I would agree that that is a new subdivision ordinance, but I would just counter and state that as a policy, and maybe not a written policy, but we have been using that as a reason to start every project with the premise of you want it on both sides because you put it in the ordinance.
And I believe a few years ago, a number of years ago, we did reconstruction on Redwood. And there was a big discussion as to whether or not there'd be sidewalks on both sides. And at that point, the council decided they would just have the sidewalks on the one side of the street. Is that correct?
There is some past precedence for having it on one side in lieu of two.
Yeah. So it does happen in the city, and the city, and the council has approved those.
That has happened.
The, before we get to other comments from the council, I want to be sure the audience has a chance for their inputs, so.
Mandy Baumann, 702 South Fourth Street. My questions are more about the bike path. I guess I wasn't able to attend the first meeting to know that the road was shifting to the east side, the reduction in the road was, so I'm just wondering if they're going to, so there's already a sidewalk on the west side that will be expanded further into yards and driveways. Will there be a boulevard as well? How much will that go into the-
Good question. You know, there may have been a little misinterpretation. The road is narrowing, but that east curb line is going to stay in about the same spot that it is today. The narrowing will come off of the west curb line, thereby creating more boulevard space to make room to widen that sidewalk.
Okay.
I believe it's around four to five feet of boulevard space.
Okay. Okay. That was one of the questions. Other questions just about that is, with it being a wider space, who is responsible for plowing that? Will that be a city thing? It'd be an additional space for homeowners to take responsibility for that?
Historically, when we've had these off-street trails, the city parks department has moved that snow when they have time. So it might take them some time to get other necessary operations complete, then they circle back to that. So a lot of times, we see residents blow a path through, maybe not the full width, but just knock a path through, and the city parks department will come by within a couple of days, hopefully, and get that kicked back some more.
Okay. And just, I mean, I guess I've never heard of situations where the city ordinance of cleaning sidewalks has been enforced, or I've heard of it, but that would be not enforced, I'm assuming, for those spaces?
We do enforce that ordinance, and we have probably more in recent years than we have in the past due to all the snowfall.
But for the bike path, that would be as well?
That's interesting territory that we have not had a complaint or had to deal with. But I think that it's a good practice for residents to clear a path and then let the city parks crew come through at a later time. I think that's just a good practice.
Okay. All right. With the boulevard, will that be homeowners, is there a boulevard with the bike path as well?
Yes.
Okay. Will that be a city thing, or is that homeowners?
Homeowners will still maintain the boulevard, as you do today.
Okay. Liability? Are there any liability with, is that city property now? Is that-
Another good question, and I can defer to our attorney if he wants to jump in, but standard response is you're responsible for the walkway in front of your property at all times, to make sure that it's free of ice and that there's not trip hazards. But the city may have a shared responsibility with the homeowner.
Okay. And just a few other comments that I have, just knowing backing onto Fourth Street right now is already with, there is a lot of traffic. High-traffic times are very hard to back out of there. I'm just imagining someone on a bike trying to go on a nice bike ride, having, you know, if a car is having to wait to back out, they're stopping too. We're in their way. They're, you know, our cars are going to, there's a lot of driveways along that section of Fourth Street. I just, I, a bike, I have a hard time imagining a nice, leisurely bike ride down that road at any time. So that was, I just, the, for, the second letter I got was the first time I had heard about the bike path proposal. I didn't, I didn't get that from the first, the initial construction notice, but just, those are some other things that I've had concerns about, I guess, as far as a full bike path on one side. But, thank you.
Thank you. Other people are interested in speaking?
I'm Mary Ann Hansen, and I live at 615 South Fourth Street on the corner of Fourth and George. And my concern is the gas pipeline, I don't know if it's a substation or what, that is in front of my house, but it's got quite a few pipes to it, and I was just wondering if they're going to go around it, or if they've talked to the gas company about it. To me, it looks like it'd be quite an expense to move it, and I'm not in favor of the sidewalk either, because we don't use our front door, and it would be a job for me to get it cleaned up in the wintertime. Thank you.
Thank you, and that-
But have you contacted the gas company? Sorry.
We have been in contact with Great Plains. They're aware of it. We have not come to a resolution on how we're going to handle it, but we're working that through, and we're sort of waiting for project approval to take it the next step.
Well, thank you.
Okay. So in the interest of time, you know, with Monty speaking, and then if additional people you may want to even be ready to go.
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, and city administrator, Monty Buncher, here regarding 621 South Fourth Street. And we attended the public hearing regarding the sidewalk, basically on the east side of the street is what I'm here in reference to. And basically, some of our concerns are that by putting the sidewalk on the east side of the street, it was brought up earlier about the reduction in parking, the ability to park. And with Fourth Street being an emergency snow route, if you can't park on the street, you can't park on the driveway to block the, you know, sidewalk, our concern is that. And with the eight-foot bike path on the west side, is there really a need for the sidewalk on the east side? So that was our concern. And we are, signed the petition against the sidewalk, so.
Okay. Thank you, Monty. Other input? Okay, I'll turn to the council for input. Russ?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have, I was at the last meeting, I am opposed to this project. I'm not, excuse me, I'm not opposed to the project, but I'm opposed to the specs of the project. In reference, at the last council meeting, there was, there was conversation about sidewalks adding value. I had a conversation with our city assessor, and unfortunately, that word "value" does not come into play. It probably adds an appeal. "value" does not come into play. It probably adds an appeal to your property, maybe that, and again, I, when I talked to our city assessor, I said, being my home that does not have a sidewalk, if I wanted to sell it to an elderly couple, they would probably look at not having a sidewalk as a benefit. Wanted to sell it to a younger couple, they would probably look at that saying, it's not a benefit when you had a sidewalk. So it really does not determine the value of your property. It's more of an appeal. I'm opposed to narrowing of the streets, like the comments that we've heard, bus traffic. I've said before that, and again, it was brought up tonight, buses cannot turn around in those J-turns, so they're coming down Fourth Street. Also, take into consideration, you've probably got a couple hundred homes in each of those addition. Those people are coming out onto Fourth Street, or they're going to Camden Drive, or they're going to whatever. They're going to US Bank, they're going, whether it's the West Side Grade School, whether it's downtown, whatever. South Fourth Street is a heavily traveled street. If you head south, you're going to 23. You know, that was an intersection that I know the state looked at, maybe possibly putting another J-turn or something over there because of traffic fatalities. Fortunately, knock on wood, we haven't had them. But again, I am opposed to the narrowing of the street. Conversation that I had with somebody today, they said, on the eight-foot sidewalk on the west side, Park and Rec has to come through and blow that snow. You now, you're moving that sidewalk eight foot, you know, four foot wider, three foot wider. They're going to blow that snow on the city's, on the property owners, thereby, either that, or they're going to blow it back on the street, where the street department has come and blow it, put it in a dump truck, haul it away. So there's not that much room between the property owner and that eight-foot sidewalk on the west side. I think of putting on a sidewalk on the east side is ridiculous. There's been made reference to an ordinance and everything else. And I, and Jason, you were going to give me this information. I haven't received it yet, but they recently did a reconstruction on 100 Block of Donita. And I think within the last five years. Talked to a couple of property owners, sidewalks were not even brought up. There are no sidewalks on 100 Block of Donita. So we're talking about, you know, grandfather clauses in, we're talking about exceptions. We're talking, 100 Block of Donita Avenue, there was sidewalks, no sidewalks on either side of the street, sidewalks were not even mentioned. That was a major reconstruction. Same issue we're having here. Again, I'm opposed to the specs of the project. The project has to be done because of sewer and water and everything else. But I am not in favor of narrowing that street, and I'm not in favor of putting a sidewalk on the east side, and I'm not in favor of an eight-foot sidewalk on the west side. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other input. Steve?
So I appreciate the phone calls that I got, and I appreciate the input. And I'm going to speak from my standpoint. So I tend to lean towards Councilmember Labatt's feelings. As a cyclist, the person who brought up the bike path, I cycle a lot. It's already tenuous driving because of traffic and disrespect for motor vehicles, for bicycles. And if I'm on the road, I automatically am granted right away, because I'm a moving vehicle and I'm going to the flow of traffic. So by law, cars have to stop. If I'm on a sidewalk, that becomes muddled. And if you're on a bike path, I agree, the bike path, so where it is on Saratoga, that bike path where there's no east-side sidewalk, which was true, the bike path is on the west side. It's a beautiful bike path, and there's no driveways on that side. It's a straight shot. So it's much safer to get on there as a cyclist on a busy road and go up over the pedestrian bridge and come across. That would not hold true on Fourth Street, because I'm going down sidewalk, 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 and I can guarantee you, somebody's going to get hit at some point in time. So I have concerns about that. The whole consternation between sidewalks adding value and appeal, yeah, I think that has to be taken on a case-by-case basis. And right now, Fourth Street is a major artery. It's a completely major artery. So I, too, would speak in favor of the project, but the specs as written, I say just build it like it is and fix it and leave it be. I think putting the bike path where it is, leaving the parking, because you change that parking, and you're taking a major artery and making it more narrow. Again, it puts up risk for accidents and injury, and that's where my real concern is. As a city council, we need to improve our city, but we need to improve it for our people. And you hate to make an improvement that causes injury and death, so.
So just to clarify, Steve, you would speak in favor of...
The project, but not the specs.
Just rebuilding it as it is?
Right.
And the bike lane on...
Bike lane on the road. Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, and I just, and these are great points, and I want to touch a little bit on what Russ said, too, because I look at the, and I don't know what the addition is called, but the Donita, you know, everything to the west of Fourth. And those projects being major construction, I'd have a really hard time pushing sidewalks in any of those neighborhoods, simply because of how tight those properties are. So again, I've always said that I'm strong in favor of sidewalks and pedestrian connection, but I also say that every rule, every ordinance has an exception. And part of what we have to do here is to be reasonable. And I will say that the arguments and the compelling piece that I've heard here is the best I've heard since I've been on council opposing the sidewalk piece. And I would tend to agree that the eight-foot bike path is interesting, but when you actually look at the number of crosses that you'd have, both on street and on sidewalk, I think I would also favor leaving the street as it is. You know, I'd agree with what Dr. Meister has said and what Councilman Labatt has said, is, you know, rebuild the project, rebuild the project with the surface features the way they are. Maybe adding, I don't know what that's, is that sidewalk four feet now?
I believe it's four. It should be five by ordinance.
Right. So maybe just widening the sidewalk out to be the conventional sidewalk, and then leave it be. I mean, I, and I know that you can come back and give us some options on that per direction, but the residents have made a compelling argument. I've had some time to look at it. And again, I think the beauty of being an elected official is we have the ability to fix problems when they come in front of us. And Jim and I have talked about this, you know, to death, and we're very strong about the sidewalks. But I tend to agree with my other two colleagues on this.
Could I just make a quick comment? We're running short of time here, and I just want to make sure the public has an opportunity to comment. And I get a feel from the council that we're heading in a certain direction as far as what we want to do. But are there other concerns other than the sidewalks and the narrowing of the street? Other than that, does the public have any concerns that they want to address to the council?
Which is my role in asking for that.
Okay.
Sorry. A couple more comments, and then we're really going to have to decide whether or not to continue this hearing or not. So John, Jim?
Okay. Just one quick thing that I did bring up last time that would like to suggest again is, you know, I listened to all the comments regarding the sidewalk on the east side, but there is one section through the park that, between Catherine and Thomas, that I do think it would be good to put a sidewalk on the east side where the park is. We've already got a sidewalk that crosses the park, kind of going off into, if I remember right, kind of a dead end there, right up to the street.
So to cross at the intersection?
Just cross at the intersection and put a sidewalk in between Catherine and Thomas.
We do have sidewalk there. The city did complete that.
On the park side?
Yes. We completed that link recently.
I want to keep that, then. Jim?
Yeah, I'm a proponent of sidewalks, have been since this was a voter-approved ordinance years ago. Voted for it back when I was 22 years old to do this. We keep hearing about how busy this street is. And, you know, Steve, you talked about safety. If the street's so busy, why are we going to force our kids across the street to walk to the pool, to walk to another park, without a controlled signal? I keep hearing how busy the street is, yet we're going to force our children onto the street. And I just, to me, and I'm going to go back to my neighborhood, we have sidewalks in our neighborhood. My sidewalk is 18 feet from my front window. Never bothered me. Our community is a community within itself because we have those sidewalks. Our neighbor kids come over, we sit and visit. We're out in our community, talking amongst each other, not on the street. I think when we force our citizens on the streets, we do create a dangerous situation. No, I'm not opposed to leaving the street the same width and leaving the bike path on the street. That's a compelling argument. I'm not a biker, but I can see the point of stopping at every sidewalk, put the bikes on the street. But I would not, I would like us to continue to put sidewalks in on both sides of the street. I think, once the neighborhood would get them, they'd realize that it is a positive to your house. I won't use the word "value", but it's a huge positive to your neighborhoods when you start connecting them on sidewalks.
I move we continue the...
So at this point, I will, before I entertain a motion on that, I would ask staff, as this is a continued public hearing, I would ask staff to prepare an alternate resolution based on the discussion here, so there's both resolutions to continue, or to consider by the council. I will now entertain that motion.
I move that we continue this.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim, to continue the public hearing until the next regular council meeting discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote.
Can you voice vote, please?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. So because we have to adjourn by 6 o'clock, that's the reason we needed to continuous, when we open the continued public hearing at the next regular council meeting, there will still be the opportunity for input, both from the audience and the council. We haven't closed the public hearing yet. Okay? With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig, to adjourn discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're opposed, and it's 6 o'clock PM.